Okay, you're ready.
Thank you. So this is the Commission on Disability and the date is the 28th of January 2021. I'm going to call the Commission meeting to order and if we could begin as opposed to doing Pledge of Allegiance by having a moment of silence for people who have either passed away or been know from pandemic or anything else in recent weeks. And thank you all very much. So I thought the first thing we would do as usual is go around and so just get our names on the record for being here this evening. So I'll start with myself, Jonathan Gale, as the co-chair of the Dayton Commission on Disability and the coordinator for the town of Dayton. Kevin?
Kevin Smith.
And Jen?
Jen Dzichowski.
And Jocelyn?
Jocelyn Tavars.
And Nicole?
Nicole Mello.
And last but not least, Ken. So thank you very, very much. Just pulling up the agenda in my ears, in my other ears we speak. So if you can bear with me for 10 seconds. I really apologize, first of all, for getting this out so late to everybody. As I said earlier, some of it is things we've discussed before. But it's been one of those weeks. Just leave it at that. So we're not meeting, of course, at Old Town Hall. Ken, do you know when the Old Town Hall might be opening again? Has there been discussion about when things might be opening up?
They haven't. I think we're waiting to get out of the red zone. It's still in red.
Okay. Okay, so let me start with pandemic responses and rollout and I'll incorporate a couple of things into it. And some of this is redundant, so we're not going to have to go through it later. I think everybody is aware that my role for the pandemic committee in town has been approved by the Board of Selectmen. And then at the most recent Board of Selectmen meeting, there was also a motion made to have myself representing the Commission on the Dayton Emergency Preparedness Committee as well. That was approved as well. The caveat to that is that right now there are five voting members of that. The other two, I'm going to say at-large members, would be myself and Jim. And if I were a voting member, then that would make it six and there could be theoretically a tie. So what the Board of Selectmen has done is postponed voting privileges for myself and Jim until they check with, is it the police chief, Ken?
Fire chief.
Fire chief, to see if he would like both of us as voting members or to keep it at the current five voting members. So if he elects that he think that they think there should be Jim and I as voting members, then we'll be added in that way. Otherwise, it'll stay as is. So with that, I don't know anything more about what the town is doing specifically. I haven't heard anything else from pandemic response. I haven't heard anything from the Health Department. I have heard from the Commonwealth and the Commonwealth is saying, similarly to what everybody's hearing in the news, that they don't know. There's enough confusion right now about people using the state's websites and opening the regular facilities for people to go to, for places to be tested. They haven't begun to put dates together yet when they're going to allow towns to do the rollout for vaccinations. So they're thinking, what I heard yesterday potentially, was the earliest is going to be mid-March. There is, however, they're beginning to put together their rules and the criteria for how seniors and people who are homebound are going to be tested. Those should be rolling out, they might actually roll out as early as tomorrow. And if that's the case, then and depending upon how it affects what we do, you know, I might need to ask us all to call a short meeting to go through it and discuss it and see how it affects what we're doing. But I won't even know any of that until tomorrow or Monday or Tuesday, assuming it comes out on time. They're estimating that probably about 3% of the overall population are people who are shut-ins or seniors who will not be able to get somewhere and need some kind of direct care service. So, you know, if we do the math in our town and we assume 3% of the overall population, that would put us potentially upwards of 240 to 260, 270. Having said that, I'm sure a lot of these folks will have family members who are taking them to care facilities or other places to get vaccination. So I don't know. I don't know if anybody's heard anything else, Ken, or Nicole, if you've heard anything through the programs you're involved in?
No, I haven't heard anything.
I heard that starting February 1st, Monday, seniors over the age of 75.
Yeah, that's true.
Unfortunately, they have to do it online and not everybody at that age is able to go online. So I know
No.
His Council on Aging, I believe, is assisting the town in notifying seniors over the age of 75 and see how they can help them get the vaccine. So it would be nice if we did that in Dayton.
So what I was going to say to that, Ken, was I can post tomorrow with Justina something on the town's website as well as on the ADA page that states that if you're an individual who is 75 or older and seeking to get assistance, you know, seeking assistance to help set yourself up for a vaccination appointment, we can provide that assistance to help you schedule. If I do that, I have no problem doing that. I would probably need to, because it's even almost impossible for me to use. It's probably worse for me because of my visual impairment. It's not accessible. But I think we should offer that and I wanted to get everyone's opinion because if we do, I'm probably going to need to ask Justina to help me set up these appointments for people. And I don't mind doing that. That's, I don't, I don't think that's a HIPAA issue to help people set up appointments. But I may have, you know, I'm going to check with somebody tomorrow for Mass Office of Disability to be sure. If it's not a HIPAA issue, are any of you available if I got permission from people to send you contact information only for appointments? Now, I don't know what the appointments ask about pre-existing condition and that could create a HIPAA issue. So that's why I want to get clarification first.
Yeah, and I would suggest you run it by, before you post that.
I'm sorry, by whom?
By, you run it by the Chairman of the Select Board.
Absolutely. I would do that. But does anybody have any thoughts on that? Because if we do get responses, depending upon how we can handle it, might mean that some members might need to just reach out to folks and say, I've been told that you need help making an appointment. How can I help?
Yeah, Jonathan, if we do that as private citizens, if we just say, hey, if you, if you need help, let me know. Is there HIPAA violation there?
That's what I need to find out. And I think there might be. I'm not, I don't want to say for sure. If it can be construed as neighbor helping neighbor, but once, once we posted on, once we posted, if people contact me,
Sure.
it takes away the neighbor helping neighbor component.
Right.
I don't see how that would be a HIPAA violation. I don't know.
Right. If I put out my cell phone number and they call me.
Right. If they're asking for help in your, as long as you don't ask for any health-related information, that shouldn't.
I think, I think, I think the problem is if we do it, and I think we should at this point, I'm going to reach out to a couple of councils on aging as well as Mass Office of Disability to see what they're doing tomorrow. But my concern is that even if I give my phone number only through the town and I take the information from folks, I could take the information and potentially, you know, work with Justina or one of you to set it up. But if it's asking any person, print information, for example, do you have any, you know, pre-existing condition or do you have this or do you have that? Or it's asking for their insurance information? Because even when you go to set it up, it asks for insurance information. Even when you're trying to do it online. So if it asks for that or any, any, you know, any, any type of anything, if the person has, they came to, they have diabetes, they have heart condition, anything.
Is our, is our council on aging not doing anything?
I haven't heard of them doing anything yet. Have you, Ken?
I don't believe they're doing it. I just had it on the news about Sharon. You know, it's pretty impressive what they're doing. See, you may want to contact them, Council on Aging and Sharon. They have a great building in Sharon. And find out what the process is because we need, we, once they call us, we, we'll be going online and putting in the information. But we need to know what the state or the pharmacy or whatever they're looking for, so that we know, we get the answer, you know, we get to, whoever's interested in having a vaccine and gives us their name, we may have to ask them some other questions. For example, do you have diabetes, blah, blah, blah? Are you allergic? So along with asking people to give us their name, we need to know what the process is before we even speak to them, so that we know those questions, what I need to have answered and to make sure that we can ask those questions.
There's, there's the, I know Sharon is doing it. I think that Needham is doing it too. So I'm going to reach out to both of them. I know even more extensively, Revere is actually going to people's homes and helping them do it. And Revere has already arranged to give people who are shut-ins and over 75 shots, but you know, they haven't put that process in place yet. So I'm going to look at that too, because I want to see what they're doing. But I suspect that if, if we are able to put it out there and we need, and we need folks to be helping to call folks and do, do any of this, and it is allowed. Are any of you available potentially to help do some of this?
I'd be more than willing to help, Jonathan, as long as we've got that
As long as we know.
HIPAA part figured out.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
In these other towns, is it a Commission on Disability that's doing this? Or are we talking about their Board of Health or?
They're doing, you know, the answer to the, it depends on what the town is doing. No, there's not a one-size-fits-all, Kevin.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm, because I almost feel like it's our job to point them in the right direction and it almost should be handled by the Board of Health, right?
I would.
Not for nothing, and I don't, I'll help anybody else. You know, this isn't, I just feel like when you're talking about something this serious, this is a paid position problem, really. You know, like, we should help, but we should not be performing the full act because that's really not our responsibility as a volunteer commission.
No, and the other side of it is we can only do it for people who have disability. We can't invite anyone in the town who is 75 or older to call us for assistance. So, you know, there's a line there too. You know, many people over 75 do have some sort of a disability or something that might be considered a disability and we can't say no, but a lot don't. And, you know, we're not ready yet, I don't think, to ferret that out. We don't have lists to work with.
We have to be very careful with this, you know, because somebody shut-in could, has a transportation, they're aged, don't have a license, but they may not be necessarily be disabled. The other thing is if somebody calls and says, yeah, I'm a shut-in, how will we handle that if they say, I'm, I can't leave my house? Who's going to go to the house now and give them a vaccination?
So we don't, and we don't have that criteria yet from the town. There is, I'm going to try and get some answers to that part of it for all of us. And if there's protocol to be discussed Wednesday, there's an emergency preparedness meeting Wednesday morning after the, the town manager's meeting that I just got told about about 15 minutes ago, 20 minutes ago. So that's one of the first things I want to ask is if we identify people who are shut-ins who have disability, because technically, from the state's perspective, if they are a shut-in, they have a disability. And that's the way the state is, is couching, is couching, couching this at this point. So does that mean we have to answer all of those calls? Or if we do, who does it? Is it the fire department, police department to give it? Is it their, their town nurse to do it? Or can we designate somebody who is a nurse to do it? I don't know. So if anybody has any questions they'd like me to ask for next Wednesday, please send them to me in an email so that I can put them together because I'm, I'm new to their Emergency Preparedness Committee and Pandemic Committee. Any questions you all have that I might not think of would be really good.
Kind of related to this, Ken, do you know, does the Board of Health have regular meetings or are they just kind of do their thing internally?
They, they have regular meetings. I'm not sure if they actually have a schedule, but I know that they meet on a, on a regular basis. I don't know when the next meeting is.
I think they're meeting now, actually. I think they're meeting tonight at this, right now.
All right. I'll have to, I mean, I think we, we almost need to, obviously, we're not going to join their meeting if it's the same time as ours. But we might need to go back ourselves and if it's available, view their, their meetings because we're, we're talking about one thing, they're talking about another. I think, you know, us, the Emergency Preparedness Committee and the Board of Health all need to be on the same page. Because you know how it is with anything. It's like, we'll talk about one thing, it might get translated totally different to those other groups and vice versa. So I think we need to, all three groups should be doing their due diligence and kind of checking in with each other's meetings.
I completely agree, Kevin.
Watch these parts that, you know, when we're talking about this stuff because, you know.
Also, I'm happy to reach out to Leanne. She's, she does all the scheduling of the Zoom meetings. I would assume that the Board of Health is meeting by Zoom as well. So we could, we can get that information from her. I don't know that we'll always be able to attend, but maybe we can attend the next meeting.
I think they called this one a special meeting. I don't know that this is their regularly scheduled time, but I think me on Thursdays as well.
And, you know, maybe this has something to do with the meeting for next Wednesday, because I don't think this was a regularly scheduled meeting for next Wednesday. That's the impression I got in the way the text was sent to me. So I will, but I will reach out as well. I'll reach out to Todd and I'll reach out to Leanne as well, unless you want to do that, Jen. And if she has, even if there's a link, if somebody can send me the link, it's easier for somebody else to find than it is for me. I'm happy to listen to it and see what we can glean from it and it might give us a better sense of direction.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Leanne right now. She's very good about getting back. At least that will give us an idea of when the next meeting is. And to Kevin's point, we can always try to pull it up on YouTube too and view those.
Yeah, I'm trying to scroll right now and just see if like they actually have their meetings posted or not, but I'm not on YouTube, but I'm not sure that they do.
Nicole, do you know, have you heard anything else about vaccinations in general? I know, you know, they're doing self-facilities for seniors and so forth. Group homes I know are in the mix. My son is actually getting his first vaccination from his group home tomorrow, so.
Yeah, I know that the group homes have already started. I did see something, it's on my phone. It was for like, it was Boston, I'm sorry, my phone's not with me. Boston News, it was something in regards to a bunch of towns having some free transportation that they had set up with, it wasn't a transportation organization that I'm familiar with. I, let me look. And I thought that was interesting. I don't know how they got that set up, but.
Okay. If you find something, if you could forward it to me and I could follow it up tomorrow and see if it's anything we can tie into.
Yeah, I'll send it to you. It was Mystic Valley.
That would be north, that's probably.
Services.
Yeah.
So it was, it was a couple of towns, like in mid-maths, that they were giving the free rides to and they had to have some kind of criteria. They had to be over a certain age and stuff like that.
Okay. I have reached out, the, the local Independent Center for Independent Living here is based out of Fall River. So the Silk, that's where the Silk is. So I reached out to Center for Independent Living yesterday. The director was out of the office and said she'd get back to me tomorrow, Friday, to see what they can do in terms of, do they, they may even have people in Dayton who are already self-identified. But having said that, they may also have access to transportation. So I'll probably send out a couple of emails to everybody in the meantime, just to keep everybody updated about what's going on for that. Does anybody have any other thoughts about it? Not too much else I can.
Yeah, just one thing, Jonathan. Before your meeting Wednesday, you've got to get sworn in. I signed the form today. We need one more person to sign it. So you can maybe check with Leanne to see if it's been signed, so you can get sworn in for the meeting Wednesday.
Okay. I'll check with her first thing Monday. Thank you. So the next thing then is the budget. And I did the budget that you sent me back, Jen, where you plugged something in. That is Jocelyn in the, for sharing purposes, in our Dropbox folder. There's the folder that says budgets. I don't know if you see that there or not.
Yes.
Then I have the, the, the 22 one that you that we were working on.
Is this right, Jen? Is this the right?
This doesn't look like the one that I sent. The only thing though, on mine, really, I, I kept all of the numbers the same, Jonathan. I just was like I had texted you about the labels, what we were calling things, because.
This is from Jonathan's email. Let me go to Dropbox.
Okay.
I think that, that might be it though.
It's the one that, it says 522 budget document.
I think this is it.
There's one that says budget proposed draft. And if you open that, there's a subfolder that says 522.
Budget document, yeah. I think that's the one that's, we're looking at now.
So my question's about this a little bit. And Jen, you had a thought, you were, we were talking about the other figures there. A couple of questions I have here, because for me to make changes on this is really hard. It's not working at all. And I did, I did try to consent to that, I think, is a couple of questions. There's the 15-6 figure in there. But then there's, and then there's the $8,000 figure there. You have separated out. And then there's still a figure showing, if I'm, if I'm hearing it right, of 250 per month.
Do you want me to share my screen?
What do you see now, Jen?
Well, I just, I had done this when I downloaded the copy that Jonathan had sent me. I downloaded it into Google Sheets and then I sent it back as a CSV, so it could be opened in anything. Yeah, I left.
You see this, the Google Sheet?
I, I have the Google Sheet up.
Do you see it on the screen that I just opened?
No.
All right, hold on.
So while you, while you, while you guys are doing this part of it and, and, and sharing the screen, I did reach out to Mass Office of Disability again, specifically. And what I was looking for was how they, if they have any information on what coordinators around the state or people who represent commissions around the state are being paid and how that, how that's allocated. Jeff Dugan said that he would get back to me yesterday or by Friday, which is tomorrow, with some information on how the allocations go. When I told him what we were doing, he said he thought it was fair, but he wanted to give me more specifics, so that we have, Jen, you, you know, we were talking about setting this up so that there's some resources for them to look at and some validation.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if you want me to explain that a little bit. So
Go ahead.
So, under titled to, there is an item auxiliary aids for effective communication. So because of the conversation that we were having about the supports that Jonathan needs from his assistant in order to be able to fill out things like even this budget document, I think that the money could be put into that bucket versus, you know, we were having that conversation about, she's not a town employee, she can't be a town employee, but Jonathan has the right to pay whomever he needs to in order to get his needs met. And so I really do think that that falls under auxiliary aids for effective communication. So we could put that in the budget and link to that in the, in the mass mass general law to be able to, to refer to that. Because I just, I think that as an employee of the town, the town is responsible for making sure that he has what he needs in order to do that. And this is the easiest way to, to do that.
And I, thank you for sharing that because I was, after we got off the call last week, I was suggesting it and I just couldn't find the link. So I appreciate you doing, doing all that work on that. I, I have no objection to this. I think it's the way to go. My only concern a little bit was when the town still hears the term auxiliary aids and Ken, you might have a better idea than I and Kevin and Nicole, please, and Jocelyn chime in. I don't know how they're going to interpret that either way. I think we, the auxiliary aids figure that we had, that you put back in there was still the 8,000 figure was eight, eight something. I think the figure that I had, I had potentially budgeted for support was 4320. So I'm assuming the 8,000 figure took into account the other things that we had budgeted too.
Yes, the 8,000 figure was inclusive of the, because I wasn't sure, based on this, this does not look like any budget format that I've ever used before, Ken, so I'm not familiar with how this is done. And I wasn't sure if we wanted to list out each of the lines or if it's usually put into one bucket. So what I had done is I added the Printing Office Supplies and Postage, the Professional Development and the Auxiliary Aids all into one line, which was like the ADA Coordinator Budget Line, because then we also had the ADA Coordinator Stipend Line. And those were the only two that were already appearing on the budget document. So I didn't want to add anything else to it because I know that there's lots of formulas and stuff and this rolls up into a larger budget document. So I didn't want to mess around too much without any further guidance.
So I would think that this, if we're going this way, that the stipend line can be removed. Because the stipend line represents what was at one time $250 per month back in the previous year, not the current year. That was based on a $3,000 aggregate for the year. So I think, and that was carried forward from 19 to 20 to 21 to 22. So I think that that $250 per figure can, can come out of there. But I think also, and again, I think you had mentioned, Ken, when we were talking last time, there was concern about, you know, we had the additional figures in there for training and for costs, for whether it's for myself or for any, anyone who's on the commission. And I think there was some thought there that maybe we shouldn't have that there. Everybody have any thoughts there?
I think you brought the breakfast.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up on us?
I hope I'm not breaking up on you. I think we need to, you need to, what's, we come over the, now, we have a form that people are looking at to see how you select for. The concern was that at the time that we did that budget, there was no commission at that point.
Correct.
And they were, they didn't want to expand the budget for the ADA. We didn't have a commission. Now we told them that. So I think whatever, you know, whatever training that, you need that we're, we have access to, should also be in the budget. So whatever figure that's, you know, but if you are to just include it in the budget. The budget has to be broken down, like if we have printing and supplies. With the auxiliary.
So I think it might be challenging to hear Ken if other folks have their mic on. So I don't know if, if, because the way Zoom works is it will just bounce around based on its picking up sound. So I think Ken's fading in and out because of that. I don't know if everybody else could mute. Sorry about that, Ken. I just couldn't hear you sometimes.
You gave me now?
Yes.
Am I breaking up?
Nope, sounds pretty good.
Okay. No, I, I think we have to make sure that when we have this budget, we break it down to the different groups that the you know, printing supplies, for example, should be aligned. Assistance, I'm not sure, Jen, how you worded that, auxiliary assistant. Stipend or salary or pay for the ADA coordinator. It was a, a concern about the. It was a, a concern about the, uh, I think it was a thousand dollars in the budget for possible training. And because we didn't have a commission at the time, uh, the finance committee, uh, wasn't, uh, too happy with that. We do have a commission now, and clearly Jonathan needs to, uh, have train to keep up with his license, as well as any train that we may be available, may be available for us, like, I think we need to make sure that the budget reflects our needs for the, uh, for the commission.
So I guess. Sorry about that. I forgot, I forgot to unmute myself. So having said that, it sounds like you say you think we should keep this broken down, Ken.
But what was that again, please?
You think, you think we should keep the budget sheet broken down?
Yes, but didn't, uh, didn't Brett send you? Something?
This is what I got from, from Brett. I did not get other instructions.
Yeah, so at the time that he sent it to you, we only had two areas, if I remember correctly, on the budget, but we're adding some now. I don't believe we had printing and supplies. I don't believe we had training.
Correct.
Clearly didn't have Justina. We didn't take that into consideration. But clearly you, you're entitled to that benefit, or Justina is, I should say, uh, to get paid for whatever assistance she gives you, uh, related to the ADA coordinator and the commission.
So I, I can't see visually the format that is up there, of course. And I think one of the questions, um, that Jen's asking too, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, is if this is the format that they're looking for.
Yeah, so Jonathan, with your permission, I can, uh, reach out to Brett tomorrow, uh, or I can reach out to Brett. I don't know if he'll be available tomorrow, but uh, try to set up some time with him, uh, to get that format figured out and show him what we're looking at, so that it, I just don't want to mess up the entire budget process if I mess up the sheet. And I'm very familiar with that, because we do a lot of budgeting in the finance department that I work in, and nobody likes it when you mess around with their formulas. So, um, I want to just make sure that we do that. But if that's okay with you, I'm happy to do that. It just, as long as we have the numbers, if we want to vote on the numbers, but then I can get it into the formatting, um, and work with Brett on that. I'm happy to do that.
If you're sure you're happy to do that, that would certainly make it easier for me, um, to not have to try to explain this visually.
Yeah, so if we want to vote on the numbers tonight, and once the numbers are approved for each line item, then I can get it into the, into the formatting.
So if we could do that, and then I will send him a text as soon as we're done, letting him know that you're going to be in touch with him.
Yeah, that sounds great. That's fine with me.
All right, great. Um, so I think if we do that, um, I think that is, if anybody wants to make a motion for any of the line items.
I'll make a motion that we approve one thousand dollars for printing, office supplies and postage for the commission, the Dayton Commission on Disabilities FY twenty-two budget.
I'll second that motion, Kevin.
Is there any discussion on the motion for one thousand dollars for printing and supplies for the FY twenty-two budget? No discussion, hearing none. I'll do a roll call. Ken, you're abstaining, of course, for all of this. Nicole?
Aye.
Jocelyn?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Eyes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. Another motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve. I'm sorry, before I make the motion, I just want to clarify, are we going with the thirty-five hundred dollars for professional development, or are we saying fifteen hundred dollars for professional development?
I think my personal opinion is for all of us, because this is a first time commission.
Well, and this is first draft, right? Uh, you're going to go over it with Brett in February anyway, so at that, if you need to back down, that's one of the lines that we said could be negotiable. Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve thirty-five hundred dollars for the professional development line for the Commission, Dayton Commission on Disabilities FY twenty-two budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Jocelyn.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call. Jen?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Jocelyn?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
And Jonathan, I, eyes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. And we need another motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars for auxiliary aids for communication budget line for the Dayton Commission on Disabilities FY twenty-two budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Kevin.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll do a roll call. Kevin?
Aye.
Jocelyn?
Whoops, aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Jonathan? I, eyes are unanimous. Thank you very much. And we have one more motion to be made.
One more motion to be made, and just point a clarification before I make the motion. It's fifteen thousand six hundred dollars that we're making the motion, or is it thirteen hundred, thirteen thousand six hundred dollars?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. I will make a motion that we approve fifteen thousand six hundred dollars for the ADA coordinator stipend budget line item in the Dayton Commission on Disabilities FY twenty-two budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Kevin.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a roll call again, please. Jen?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Jocelyn?
Aye.
Jonathan, I, eyes are unanimous for all of that motion as well. All four motions have passed unanimously. Thank you very much. And Jen, I will be in touch with Brett as soon as we're done. I will send him a text to let him know you're going to be reaching out to him.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you all very much for that. Next item on our great list here is committee reports. Anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I do have something I'd like to share. Um, it's not related to town policies, but I will just, uh, throw it out there. I'm going to forward this email to you, Jonathan, and we could put it on the agenda for the next time we meet. But Bill Garcia, I don't know if any of you are familiar with him. He works up at the high school. He is, um, I think he's one of the adjustment counselors. He sent me an email. I'm trying to pull it up so I can reference it exactly what he's asking for. Basically, he's trying to bring a Special Olympics event to the town of Dayton. And he, uh, let's see, what did he say? Um. He's making connections with the Special Olympics Massachusetts. Uh, last summer, he was in discussion with Special Olympics to bring a community-based programs to Dayton uh, Rehoboth Community for individuals aged three to a hundred and three plus. But COVID obviously disrupted those plans. Um, he wants to connect with us as a group. To rally the community and some supports around helping to move this initiative forward, obviously pending safety with the pandemic. Uh, so I will forward that email to, um, Jonathan, and maybe we can place it on a future agenda, and I think Bill would be more than happy to join us, um, if we wanted to invite him to a meeting to speak with us as well.
I think that'd be a great idea to see what he's thinking and get some ideas. Thank you.
Cool.
Kevin, have you had a chance in committee, doing committee reports to reach out to Jim yet at all?
No, um, actually, so I've had like super, super technological issues over here for like the past two weeks. I had a computer crash, and then being ambitious young man that I am, I switched to a MacBook, which I like have had since Sunday, and I think like today was the first day I successfully turned it on. So I've been struggling with doing much of anything, plus, um, because I know I have to do, um, I still have to do the drawings, like, for the ramp, and then I'll re, but I will, I'll, um, I make sure that I get that email out. As soon as we're done with this meeting, I'll send that email over to Jim to get the letter. But I've been having a hard time, um, pulling information from like Dropbox and stuff. Because I want to make sure that I send the email to him with exactly what we need. That way it's not like, oh, give me this letter, and it's like, oh, can you change this? So on and so forth, but.
So do, I can pull some stuff out of Dropbox tonight or tomorrow and just send you a separate attachment with exactly what you need, if that's easier.
Yeah, if, if, if that's easy enough for you, that'd be great. Um, I'm not searching, but yeah, like I literally just figured out yesterday, like how to get into Dropbox and Google Docs and all this other stuff through, you know.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll pull it from Dropbox, and I will send it to you tonight or tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
More likely tomorrow, I'll just, I'll send you an email with the attachments.
Kevin, I work on a MacBook, so if you ever need any tech support, let me know. I'm not great, but I'm a resource.
Well, it's like, I have, I have Apple everything. I have the watch, I have the phone, I have the iPad. I, I turned this thing on, and I was like, I couldn't even, I couldn't even hide. It took me two hours to put an app on it, like.
Well, it's, everything is flipped, right? Everything's backwards. I, I switched about a year and a half ago, and it was like my, all my muscle memory was gone. I had to retrain myself on everything. So definitely let me know if I can help, I will.
I'd definitely be reaching out, thank you.
Um, and anything, has anybody had a chance to do any review on policy, the policy subcommittee?
No, I will own up to that. We have not.
No, it's been, everybody's had a lot going on, you know, you, on one hand, think that it would be a quiet time of the year, but it's certainly not a quiet time of the year. Parks and Rec, so for the, the subcommittee that, uh, Kevin and I have, have formed, Kevin and I have not gotten together yet and met, uh, because of schedules, and I'm sure we'll hopefully get together in the next week or ten days and, and have some conversation. I have reached out to the Parks and Rec Commission. I have done that through Mr. Rhines and, um, Mr. Rosa, I've heard, except for Mr. Rhines, I've heard nothing back from Mr. Rosa by email or by telephone, and I've.
Well, that's what I was going to ask too, because I know when I saw that on the agenda tonight, I know we haven't spoke of it, and I was kind of, I think during our last meeting, it was the same situation where Mr. Rosa had failed to respond in any way, so.
And he's not, he's not even responding to Mr. Rhines on this issue. Uh, Mr. Rhines has asked him several times about, um, you know, contacting us, um, and he's, he's not responding.
Well, I'm sure he's not interested after the special town meeting and talking to us or working with us, so we'll just, we'll, as long as we have somebody from Parks, um.
Well, Mr. Rh, the problem is Mr. Rhines is not rerunning. So.
That, yeah, but that does, that's irrelevant. At least we can get the ball rolling. He's still an active member of the Parks Department, so.
I agree, but another thought too would be, to get, I want to get everyone's input, is to also work with CPC. And, um, CPC wants to be involved, and they would like to work with us along with Parks and Rec, according to, um, what Mr. Rhines told me. Um, I've reached out to the gentleman who's the chair of CPC, and I haven't heard anything back yet. Uh, but that was just the other day when I was given that information.
And CPC is going to tie in pretty much mostly on funding, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and there's also avenues, I think we talked about this the last meeting.
Yep.
There's also avenues through open space, which we just approved Monday night, that like our final plan, which is I'm going to go to the state, I think in another month or so, we gotta just make a few tweaks. So there's also funding possibilities through there, so, because they, they mentioned the park, you know, situation, um, several times in there, uh,
Okay.
in that, in that report.
So Kevin, maybe after, after this meeting, again, tonight or tomorrow, you and I can go back and forth and set up a time to get together and, um, start to venture some other things around. I know you have some resources out there, and I have some resources as well, so I think if we can do that, that'd be great.
All right, yeah, definitely. Yeah, we'll just keep in touch and, and figure out a time that's good for both of us.
Okay. Is there anything I can do to help you besides sending you the information, by the way, for the ramp? Um, I can't do drawings, obviously.
Well, that was kind of what I wanted, was I was hoping that you would draw it. You always want to go hunting with me, so I figured if you.
I'm still going hunting with you this Saturday.
Do a draw, do a drawing for me. No, I think, um, that, that was the biggest thing, is I, I've just had, um, I, I was having a hard time like sifting through emails and stuff to find the right information to send to Jim. But now that I'm kind of, you know, quote unquote, back online fully, if you send me that piece, that should be all I need. I think we can probably, we'll definitely have everything wrapped up and ready to submit by the, our next meeting.
Okay, very good. And, um, we haven't done anything with policies again yet. I know, you know, we need to eventually, Jen, if there's anything I can do to help you reach out with that or review policies, if it'll help you for me to, I can review some things and then send you some notes if that's easier.
Yeah, I think Jocelyn, you and I were going to get together too, so if we can align schedules, we can get some time on the calendar to just, I need to put some time on the calendar to actually work on it, and then once I have that and we get going, it'll give me some momentum.
All right, and I can take, I'll take a look at some of the policies, and, um, if I see anything, then I'll send you both, you know, documents to look at that I think could be changed or, or slightly revised.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, all right. Emergency preparedness, we've already discussed. Um, again, I don't know where that's going to stand any further, so stay tuned. Playgrounds, we've already discussed. We have the minutes from the meeting of the tenth. Has anybody had a chance to look at them? Jocelyn, again, good, great job, thank you. Anybody have any thoughts on them at all? Any changes to be made?
I just had to reopen it to see if I actually did read it, but I didn't. Sometimes I read these things on my phone, and then I forget that I've read them.
That's okay.
No, great job, Jocelyn, thank you.
Yeah, everything looks good to me also.
Okay. Ken, did you get a chance to review them at all, or Nicole? Okay. I, if somebody would like to make, to make a motion for the meeting minutes for the tenth?
I'll make that motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from January tenth, twenty twenty-one, from the Commission on Disability meeting.
I'll second that. Jen?
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, have a vote to approve the minutes from the tenth of January twenty twenty-one. Jen?
Aye.
Jocelyn?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Jonathan, aye. Eyes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. Um, minutes are posted in Dropbox, and we are good to go on, on minutes. Do we have anything else under Old Business? The mailer draft, I think everyone knows, has been approved, um, tentatively. I did, go ahead, somebody can say something?
I just have a question. Um, Jen, when you said you were going to, um, make the edits, did you mean on the, the draft of the mailer itself, or just to Jonathan's document?
I think I had already done it, so it might have been just to Jonathan's document. Because I didn't, yeah, I didn't want to mess up any, I mean, I can, if you want me to, I can do that.
No, 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 that's fine. I just, um, it just occurred to me that it wasn't clear to me if I needed to go in and do that, or not.
No, I appreciate that clarification. I'm happy to help if you need any.
I, I just haven't touched it, so I don't want to assume, you know, we sent something out.
My, my brain could be malfunctioning. I know I made the edits, but I don't know which thing I made them to, so it's one or the other, Jocelyn.
All right, I'll.
It was to mine.
Was it? Okay.
Yes. Yep.
All right, so then I just want to, it just occurred to me that I'm like, hmm, I haven't touched.
No, it was, it was to mine, and it went, um, that was the one that went to the Board of Selectmen um, that they, that they looked at, and overall, you know, approved the, the concept of it, we.
The content, all right, so then I should be just updating the back.
Yes, correct.
All right, I just wanted to clarify.
And then, um, I did, uh, I reached out to the, the post office, and I sent them a draft of what, what we're looking at in terms of size, and uh, because it's from the town, and I think the figure I got was nineteen cents per piece. So, and you said there's roughly thirty-two hundred, Ken, right? Residents? Ken with us? Can anybody hear me?
Ken's muted.
Oh, okay.
So, all the time I have it muted, I just muted a minute ago. Thirty-two forty, something like that.
Okay, all right. So I got, the figure I've, I've gotten from the post office is, um, preliminarily, um, nineteen cents per unit. And then I did reach out and did have a conversation back with Bristol Plymouth. Um, and I did send them the, again, a copy of the draft and asked them to give us three different layouts, slightly different layouts, because they said they could do it a couple of different ways. And I haven't gotten that back yet. Um, I did send an email to reach out yesterday, and we still haven't heard back. They said it would take about ten days to two weeks because of COVID to hear back, and we're, we're two weeks now, so. Hopefully I'll have something I can, again, I may. Hopefully I'll have something that I can, again, I may send this up preliminarily to everybody, just to ask you how you feel about it.
Did they mention anything as far as cost if like we do it through BP?
Um, they haven't given me an idea of the cost yet, but he was thinking somewhere under $600. He thought it would come in under $600. Um, I told him we need, I said 3300. And I told him we would like it on a, you know, a thicker cardboard type of stock. Um, so that it's something that can go in the mail and then have to be inserted in anything else. So similar to, you know, postcard style. And the figure he gave me, um, was, he said it would probably come in under 600. But they would have to be sure and then see what the cost of the stock would be. It's mostly the stock.
Yeah, typically with a vocational school, you're mostly just paying for material, uh, obviously they're not gonna charge you labor, I think.
No.
Child labor laws.
Yeah, so he said it was mostly gonna be stock. Um, and that would be it, so. Again, hopefully we'll have, we'll have some information on a couple of things. For the bylaws, I did reach out and send an email to Mr. Pacheco from the Bylaws Committee. Um, have not heard back yet. Ken, is there a Chair of the, I know you said you were a member?
I'm not a member of the Bylaw.
Oh, okay, I thought you had said you were, because there's three different individuals, but none of them are quote Chairs, unquote. So I reached out to Mr. Pacheco.
No relation.
Okay. To, to hear back so that we can have the bylaws run through the bylaws commission, uh, committee. That was the feeling of the Board of Selectmen, that our bylaw should run through them for review. So, um, once I hear back, I will set up a meeting. And I will pass our bylaws on to them for review. And I don't suspect there'll be any changes, but, um, that's the process we've been asked to follow, right? So, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that or not. Pandemic Committee, I've already told everyone about, again. Emergence. For new business, um, the main thing for new business is there are a couple of other grants coming up, so. Let me back up for a minute, if everybody doesn't mind, I'm gonna back up a little bit. The KMA contract, give you the update on the KMA contract potential. The KMA contract was for the $30,000 that we got approved at town meeting to, uh, do the engineering study for the town, for the town hall and take us to permitting. I sent the contract to Jim and to Chris, the Town Accountant, and to Brett for review. And we had a, a meeting yesterday about it and the main issue is a couple of things. First of all, um, Jim indicated that he felt he wished he had been more involved in the, in the process a long time ago. And he wasn't aware of the contract, that there was even a contract going forward. And I explained to him that, um, there was no intent to slight Jim or to, to exclude him from anything. And I wasn't aware prior to, to having these conversations with KMA that he was not involved in the process. You know, the, and I, I think he understands that. That certainly wasn't deliberate on, on our part to, or my part to do that. Um, having said that, going forward, what we've decided is the original agreement that was made potentially preliminarily with KMA and the town included the town hall, but excluded the potential for an elevator. So the draft that I put together with KMA did include schematic for the elevator only. And some additional language so that they would also, you know, we, we, we could put together through the commission, I wanted to have a public meeting with the town and get towns input as well. And that was included in there as well as presentation to the Board of Selectmen, to the Commission on Disability and ultimately a town meeting, um, and no additional cost. And, um, the, for KMA, it also worked with the Ultimate Architects and engineers who would be doing the project. Jim felt that we need to have some more language in there and Brett, and ultimately myself as well, that we need to have some more language in there that includes the elevator. Um, again, not knowing where it might be right now, because if town hall were to go under major renovations in the future to expand out or upward potentially, where would an elevator fit? And, you know, we need drawings for that. We wanna have more than just schematics for that. The problem is that to expand the scope of the contract also means expanding the dollar value for the engineering study. From the $30,000 to potentially 45 to $50,000. So what we've decided so far is to have Jim take some time and put, put some more documentation into what his vision of the scope of the, of the engineering study would be. And then to go back to KMA and see what they would give us for a figure and potentially put it out to bid to other companies as well. Um, so KMA was the, was the company that did the original study for the town, as everyone knows. Uh, but that doesn't necessarily mean they have to be the company who gets this engineering contract. I think they know it best. But, you know, once we add to the scope a little bit and increase the dollar value, they may not be the company that gets that. Chris has indicated, the Town Accountant, that we may not have to go that back to uh, town meeting to ask for the additional dollars, that the additional dollars may be able to be gotten through other sources, depending upon the amount of the difference in what the contract would be.
I asked a couple of questions, Jonathan, before you get too much further along.
Yeah, I'm almost done. I'm pretty much done, so go ahead.
Uh, so a couple, there's a couple items on there, like, um, the building, uh, the, the main level ramp, um, multi-user toilet rooms, single user toilet rooms. The, when it goes to permitting, is those, are those permits issued by the town or those by the state?
Both.
Okay. On, is it worth, uh, cause I think Jim has enough knowledge and with the proper guidance, do we need to spend the money to have those things engineered when like if, cause they're not gonna be, KMA is only giving you plans, they're not giving you.
They're taking us right to permitting.
Right, but they're not doing the actual construction, so.
No, they're, no, they're not.
So that's why I think we, we could have another conversation with Jim, where if there's certain areas that we aren't required to have actual engineered drawings, like we might find some savings in there also. And I don't know if that's possible. I think that's more of a question that Jim would be able to answer. But if there's certain things that like, I, like to me, I don't think a bathroom needs an engineer drawing, um, per se.
It might, it might, it might if it has to be relocated somewhat or structurally, if you're changing the doors and that changes the structure of the integrity of the, you know, of the, of the walls or something, or, or beams potentially, I guess.
Well, yeah, and I, I can understand and appreciate that, that portion of it, but I think maybe also too, we might have to, like I said, just have one more conversation with Jim also before we move forward. And maybe you, myself and him can do a walkthrough one day and try to figure out like, kinda do our own little value engineering, like. areas that we know we can tackle without bringing in and spending money through this avenue and, you know, do it in-house or whatever, if possible.
I think, I think that Jim indicated, um, I'll, I'll give you two, two answers to that. One is that I think even at, at the town meeting, Jim indicated that this was not his area of expertise. And even in the conversation we had the other day, that it makes sense for an engineering company who specializes in this stuff to do that. So, on one level, I think what we're doing is definitely being in the right direction. On the other hand, there are some renovations going on at town hall right now that I was not even aware were happening, um, until we had our conversation the other day. And it's possible that a few of the things they're doing now, that might mitigate a few of the things that would be on KMA or anybody else's hit list that are already being mitigated. So, you know, it's possible that one could offset some of the other, I guess, is what I'm saying. Um, but I agree, I think it makes sense to reach out. So, I think it would make sense to actually invite Jim to come to one of our meetings in the next couple of meetings that we have. There's no limit on when we do this, according to Chris, again, the Town Accountant. The $30,000 has been allocated. It doesn't have to be spent by the end of this fiscal year. We don't actually have, we, you know, it's, it's indefinite at this point, according to what he said. So we're not under any rush timeframe to have to get this done. So, if everybody's in agreement, I think it might make sense to, once this plan gets put together a little more, to have Jim, um, come to one of our meetings and talk to us about it and explain it more.
Yeah, I'd love to have Jim come along us through it.
Well, that too, and I think, like you said, like he was hoping he would be more involved in the process. I think we owe it to him, you know, to build that relationship and have him sitting on a meeting, so.
I know, I absolutely agree. And I think his guidance certainly, you know, it ben, it doesn't hurt us, it benefits us. Ken, did, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, um, well, we had KMA evaluate all of our buildings and everything else and they did give us recommendations on the bathrooms. Assuming that we're not moving the bathrooms, I haven't heard anything that we're moving the bathrooms. I mean, for example, they say a grab bar that should be six inches further. That's something that you don't need some engineer to tell us how to do that. There's a lot of stuff in that report regarding the bathrooms that I think Jim or the Highway Department, whoever's gonna do the work, uh, can do on their own without getting the, uh, engineer to design where to put the bar, uh, the grab bar. So I, I think, I think Kevin made a valid point. If we can maybe eliminate some of that, and I would want Jim's input on that. Uh, but if we can eliminate some of that, maybe we can get them to, uh, give us more information on the elevator uh, for the same cost, the $30,000. So, we have had KMA evaluate our buildings and the bathrooms. Uh, so we, we do know there needs to be some stuff to be fixed. And maybe we just don't need an engineering plan to fix it, unless we're moving. I haven't heard anything, but unless we're moving the bathrooms.
Well, and I, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, first of all, I don't disagree with that. I think, I think that that makes a lot of sense. And I think that's one of the reasons we can, we should go back to, to Jim and indicate, look, you know, what can we mitigate ourselves? You know, in terms of whether it's done right or not, um, and you know, that's part of what some of these things come down to. Um, some of it, Jim knows exactly what he's doing. He's been doing this forever. Um, you know, he would also be the first to tell you, I think, certain things when it comes to ADA compliance, he does his best, but he doesn't know it all and none of us do. We also have the codebooks. I have the, the codebooks right in front of me on disk and on, on, uh, USB and in notebook form, so. You know, we can look at the notebooks and go into a certain restroom and say, you know, this has to be moved up or that has to be elevated to this or that. And can it be done? It may involve some, you know, digging out some pipes from a wall or doing something like that, but if it can be done, we don't need an engineer, I agree with you. Well, you know, whatever you want to say, we don't need an engineer to tell us about some of these things, as long as we're able to meet the compliance for it. So, yeah. Um, I think it makes sense for us to, to go back to the drawing board a little bit and.
Well, that too. Ken, I think Ken made a great point too, cause I wasn't even thinking about the full KMA report we have. Like you said, that highlights so many little things that we don't need engineering to fix, so we'll, uh, but I mean, I think this is a whole nother, this is almost like, uh, another subcommittee type issue. In, in a sense that we need to task, you know, a couple individuals with, you know, and including, including Jim to sort through the original KMA report, what this, their proposal for the engineering includes, and then review it all with Jim, see where we can remove this to add this and so on and so forth. Um, to make it all work.
So, Kevin? I, I hear a thought coming on from Kevin there.
Did I just, did I just nominate?
You might have. I wonder if, you know, we can, we can form a subcommittee, but also I wonder if we, uh, were to potentially, uh, go to the town. And we have that new buildings, uh, committee that was just formed recently, Kevin, that you mentioned recently.
Yeah, the Municipal Buildings Committee.
Buildings Committee. Would you be interested if we asked if you could have a seat on that as a representative of the Disability Commission or, um, if you could at least have conversation with them?
Yeah, I think that, that would, that's actually a really good idea. I wouldn't mind sitting on that. I, I, and I, I think they should have one of us on there anyway.
I would love it, Kevin, if you would represent us on that. I think that would be fantastic.
Can we, can we get somebody to make a motion for this and then I have?
I will, um, I will make a motion. I'll make a motion that we, um, appoint or seek appointment for Kevin Smith to the Municipal Buildings Committee pending Board of Selectmen approval?
I'll second, Jocelyn.
Is there any discussion? Ken, before we vote on this, do you have anything to add? Are you, I know it's up and running. Is this a committee that, uh, the Board of Selectmen has to potentially review people for?
Yes, but my only concern is that that item is not on our agenda. So I think it may have to go to the next meeting.
Which is fine. I don't think we're in a.
Yeah, I don't think we're in a time crunch.
No, we're not. So, should we withdraw the motion and we'll put it on for next meeting?
I'll withdraw the motion.
All right. Um, but I still think it's a great idea.
Yes.
So I think we'll put it on for next meeting. Thank you for that.
While we're talking about next meeting, uh, uh, agenda items, can we put the Winter Complete Streets Grant on the next agenda as well?
Yes, I was gonna mention that briefly, um, and indicate just to everyone that there's a, the, the Winter Streets Grant has a deadline of February 28th to be submitted. I don't know if anybody wants to work on it with me. If not, it's okay, that's fine. I'm gonna be working with Brett and Tom Ferry um, on the application process and the grant, so that we can get language in there, which will make it um, more amenable to people with disability, along with the, the location, location, location of everything that they wanna do. And how it specifically, how each of the locations that they would put, um, a walk space in or a curb cut would tie into what the town wants to do and, you know, the access it's gonna have with people with disability to this side or that side. So, yes, I will put it on for the next meeting and then hopefully we'll have a rough draft of the grant for everybody to review.
I think that's great. One other item, um, is I had recently gone through the calendar, um, on the town website. And I noticed a lot of, um, committees and, uh, commissions have like regular repeating times, so they're already on the calendar. And I know that for myself and for scheduling, that that's really helpful. I don't know for you all if we could pick like, uh, this is what, the last Thursday of the month, um, if we say like the second and last Thursday of the month we're meeting, or if we so, something to that effect, but just to have some regularity around it, um, and then we can get those, um, because what it does too is it allows, um, I think what Leanne does is puts up the Zoom link and then also the link to the agenda, so it's all in that calendar, which is really handy, I think.
So I'm totally open to that. My, my thought would be every, the second and the fourth Thursday of each month, I, I would hope over time that we don't necessarily, we can back it down and go to once a month, but I think, um, right now, we've all been in a lot of different directions. It's been hard to put different things together and we're still young in terms of what we're doing. So I think if we could do it twice a month, that would be great. Um, and maybe by the summer, we could go to once a month, but if everybody's open to that, um, I'm all for that and I would be happy to entertain any discussion. And then, um, if we're all in agreement, I can pass it on to, to Leanne as well.
I think that's a great idea, Jen.
So the next one would be February 11th. And then, uh, again on the 25th.
Correct.
Does, does five o'clock on those days work for everybody still?
So for, in general, we're every two weeks, in essence, basically. The second and fourth, so if there's a fifth Thursday that month, we're not gonna be meeting on that one.
It definitely won't be a fifth in February.
Right, and then in March, it's the same dates again. Yes, and then in April, it's a little bit different and, and May.
I think what Jen suggested, uh, and Leanne mentioned that to me today about another committee, uh, to be more consistent as to what dates we're gonna have it. It makes it easier for her, easier for her to set up the Zoom. Somebody else can't take that meeting, uh, away from us. So I, I think if we agree on the second and fourth, I can tell Leanne or Jen wants to tell Leanne, uh, that's what we're gonna do and she'll put it in the calendar so that we got those, uh, dates. And for five o'clock, so that we're locked in with Zoom, we're locked in for those dates. And once we start meeting at Old Town Hall, we'll also be locked in the facility, the Old Town Hall, so.
Okay.
Locked in like we can't get out, Ken?
So if it works, if everybody's in agreement, um, I can just send her an email soon as we're finished and let her know that that's what we're doing.
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay.
Sounds great.
And Nicole, that works for you?
Yep, that's good.
Jocelyn, is that okay for you? I know that, you know, you're, you know, you, to, to do the minutes and everything like that, it's asking a lot of you to do this.
Well, um, I know the 25th, I have a library program rate at seven, so that's the only consideration.
Yeah, I'm wondering, Jonathan, where, if we're doing two o's a month, if we can try to keep it to under an hour and a half. You know, we're, we're at an hour fifteen right now and I think, you know, we're almost done, so I think.
As far, my, my goal for every mini, meeting is to be maximum an hour and a half, but preferably an hour to an hour and fifteen minutes.
Is that helpful, Jocelyn?
Oh, that would be fine. That would be fine.
Okay. Okay, I think, again, I think once we, you know, once we, we all are able to start doing some of the background work collectively, it'll speed things up too, because that way everybody will be able to report on what they're doing and work off of each other during the interim periods. So, and you know, that just takes some time to get going and there's been a lot going on in general with holidays and, and everything else too, so.
Well, Valentine's Day is coming up and I got a lot of rose petals to throw out and things like that, so that's gonna tie up some.
Arrows to shoot and whatnot.
Yeah, there you go.
All kinds of things.
That's right. Should we have a Valentine's dinner? What do you think, everyone?
If the world were different, I would say, yeah, let's do it.
Well, you know, we'll have our meeting and we can all have our little tray in front of us and vicariously share Valentine stories or something.
Lots of chocolate.
Absolutely. So. Does anybody have anything else right now? There's not, I will say, in terms of the engineering study, just very quickly, the engineering story for the, for the schools, I've heard nothing else yet. I don't even know if they've actually started doing the work on the first phase of the study or not in the past couple of weeks. I will reach out to Jim in an email and ask him if he can just give me an update if they've done anything yet. But knowing that we're not really involved in phase one, I'm not too concerned about it right now.
Sounds good.
Anybody else have anything else right this minute?
Can I add one thing for our next meeting?
Sure.
Can we get back to stay in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
All right, I think, because, and, and I, I don't know, I, I think time constraints is, is part of it, and I'm, I'm totally for our moment of silence. But I think it's very important, especially with the stigma in this country right now, that the flag is bad, the Pledge of Allegiance is bad, that when you're doing something good for your town, that you tie that into it. I just feel like it.
I like that idea, and I like how, so Selectmen Goulart has been holding up a little flag, but I was actually thinking I could just do a background or a graphic that is a flag, if everybody's okay with that, and then I could just share that while we do the pledge.
Absolutely.
And actually, I noticed, I've noticed what, what Brett has done at the past couple of meetings, especially of the Board of Selectmen is he's, he's done the pledge allegiance and then still asks for a moment of silence.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I think, you know, we can do that absolutely, Kevin.
Thank you.
Definitely. Does anybody have anything else to add right now? And please, if anybody has anything along the way that you think of or documents to share or just a thought that jumps out at you for something that we should follow up on or I should be looking at, shoot me an email or a text.
We do have a member of the public here. I don't know if we want to ask for public input.
I didn't, didn't know that, so, yes, if we have public input.
It looks like Mr. Woods is here.
Mr. Woods.
Mr. Woods, did you have any public input for us tonight?
I do not have any public input, but it was a very good meeting and thank you guys for doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, really. I didn't, obviously, I didn't know you were there, so thank you for joining.
I'm a disabled veteran, so I'm very interested. And I appreciate the follow-up on the elevator town hall.
Well, let me ask you, Mr. Woods, before we let you go, as a disabled vet, first of all, I thank you, just like my son and everyone else for your service, but also is there anything, as a disabled vet specifically, that jumps out at you that you think we should be thinking about in the future? Be nice to hear your thoughts for a minute.
Yeah, I, I'll think about it and I'll get back to you in your next meeting, okay?
That works. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Thank you very much.
Thanks for joining us, Mr. Woods. It's funny that you logged on tonight, because I was actually thinking about you, because I believe it was like two or three meetings ago, or maybe it was, you know, sometime in the beginning of the December, you had asked us to send you information for our next meeting and I, I was like, oh, I hope we've been sending them stuff or we should, I was gonna bring it up tonight, that we should send you stuff, so I'm glad you got logged on and joined us.
Jocelyn's been taking good care of me. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thanks for doing that, Jocelyn.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Any last minute thoughts? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting of the Day End Commission on Disabilities.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll take a vote. Jen?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Jocelyn?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Jonathan, aye. Ayes have unanimously, so we will adjourn it to our next meeting on the 11th of February. I will get those emails and so forth out this evening. And I'll also send a text to Brett right now, Jen, letting him know that you're gonna be in touch with him.
Perfect, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. All right, bye-bye.